Hello.
Well, it's the. I'm not gonna let you live that down.
I know.
We're already there, Lyle. You got the cabin behind you.
What have I got? Oh, that's a.
Snow scene.
Yeah, I don't know. Let's change it to. Change it to. This. Here we go.
Oh, yeah.
It's almost spring break.
This was actually a house that we rented in November down in Florida. The pool was massive.
Wow.
Wish I was there now. Mal, how you doing?
Good. How are you doing?
All right.
I got all my shots.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Do you have any effects at all?
The second one, I was pretty puny the day after.
Yeah.
But I mean, it looks just go to bed and take a long nap, but.
Yeah.
Other than that, no problems. Doug Barry. Can I ask you a couple of questions on Robert's Rules of Order?
Sorry.
If the chair entertains a motion for deferral or approval, disapproval, and we all debate it, and somebody makes an amendment to that and change it. We vote first on the amendment. Do we have to go back and vote for the original motion also?
As if amendment passes, then you vote on the the motion as amended. So it's a two-step process. Yes. So if you have a motion, a second on the first mode on the main motion.
Right.
Hasn't been voted on yet. Then you have someone says, I moved the minimum motion by adding the condition that all this be done within 60 days. So you get a second on that, then you vote on the amendment, then you go back and take a vote on the motion as amended. So main motion as amended.
So you have a vote on the proposed amendment and then add that to the motion.
And the main motion as amended after that. Yeah.
Okay.
It's a. You can have, I won't trouble you with this, but you can have amendments to amendments if you.
Yeah.
Really, really get crazy and really want to have fun. I used to liken it to climbing up a ladder and then you climb down a little bit, little bit. I don't know if that works or not. Something else.
We're waiting on Ron and Bunny.
Thank. Ron, I think was.
I'm. Can y'all not see me? Hello?
Hello.
Hi, Bunny.
There you are.
Okay. Oh, Bunny, you cleaned up. Look at your office. That makes me jealous. Aw. Well, it's a little quieter out here today than in my house.
All right. Will and Ron Ferris is here by phone.
I'm here by phone and video.
Oh, there you are. Okay. All right. Welcome, everyone, to the March 2021 meeting of the Bellmead Historical Zoning Commission. Let's do a quick roll call for the record. Jeanette Whitson.
Here.
Ron Ferris.
Here.
Gaven Duke.
Here.
And Mal Wall here. Also. And Bunny Blackman, sorry.
I'm here too.
I note also for the record that we're assisted today by Lyle Patterson, the Assistant City Manager, Doug Barry, the City Attorney, and Edie Glasser, the City Recorder. I don't think the mayor or. Drawing a blank.
Beth is here also.
Is Beth here? Okay. Also, okay. All right. A few minutes on procedures. Lyle will introduce each proposal applicant. The applicant or its representative will present their case for what should be approved. The board will discuss, ask questions. We will solicit comments from anyone in attendance. If you do want to speak, please identify yourself and and your address for the record. And then we will close the public portion of the meeting. From that point forward, we're going to have a little bit of change. Actually, two of them. If if your issue with the board is under old business, we will assume that everybody has read the notes and we will refer back to the comments and conditions we placed when it was deferred and we'll start at that point. Instead of rehashing the entire process from beginning to end. And second, the chair, after the closing, the public portion, the chair will entertain motions for deferral, approval, or denial. And then the board will discuss it, debate it, change it, modify it, amend it. And if we have an amendment, we will vote for and approve the amendment or not approve it. And then vote for the original motion as amended. So that all being said, we will start with meeting notes from last meeting. Does anyone have questions, changes, comments, additions, deletions? If not, if not, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes submitted.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the prior meeting and the minutes from our board retreat. I think those are both up.
Okay. I'll second it, Gaven. Ron.
I.
Gaven.
Hi.
Bunny.
I.
Jeanette.
I.
And the chair would. Okay, so old business. Lyle. Your show.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody, this is being automatically transcribed. Please don't talk over each other. Those of you that are not a part of this commission, please keep yourself muted until the appointed time. First item under old business is the application for certificate of appropriateness for province builders. 903 Linwood Boulevard to construct a new single-family home. Demolition was granted at the January meeting, and I'm going to share my screen. If you would call out the thumbnails and I'll get to it as quick as possible. John, you up or Chris, one of you?
Yeah, all right. This is Chris Goldbeck with Pichet Design. I'm going to try to present, but I'm having internet issues. So if I start to cut out, John may step in for me. So.
This is Jeanette. I think it might be helpful if we just go through the five bullets of why this is coming back, and I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Okay, at the end of our discussion at the last meeting prior to deferral, the issues that we wanted to revisit were the removal of the dental molding around the house. Look at the window on the left side again for symmetry, removing the pediment on the front door. Look at the pediment dormers and review the roof pitch in the rear, and those were the summary. And so therefore, moving forward, I think it makes it clear what what we're revisiting this for.
The other thing I guess I would add, Jeanette, is, you know, I think we require grading, or at least I know the topo is on here, but I didn't see any like proposed grades.
Okay.
Y'all recall any of that?
Well, I just took that from our minutes, so it may be in there.
Okay.
Well, there was, the neighbor Stephen Mason was discussing the landscaping plan. They were discussing the wall, whether it was going before the Board of Zoning Appeals. So that's all I have on the grading.
Okay.
Okay, so so proceed. Is he having trouble with his internet?
I am. Can you hear me now?
Now I can.
Okay, sorry. I apologize for my internet connections. I'm having a bad internet day here. So with regards to the grading, the elevations, the dashed in lines that you see is the existing grade and the solid line is the finished grade. So there's really not a tremendous amount of manipulation that we're doing to the sites. We pushed the house back a little bit from the street just to work with the existing contours that we had and minimize the amount of manipulation we had to do. I believe in regards to bullet points, I think we addressed those, so we'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, one question I have is, so why did you raise the level of the house? Because I know it's already taller than the neighbor to the right if you're facing the street.
Yeah, so that was. Yep. So part of the discussion that we had at the last meeting was looking to raise the roof pitch of the of the roof forms in the rear of the house. And we didn't want the hipped roof to get over the gable of the main house. And so we discussed raising the roof pitch from a 1212 to 412 because it would be consistent with the style and also allow us to raise the roof pitch in the rear segment.
And I'm assuming with this, you still meet the requirements for Bellmead. The heights.
Correct.
Yes. It, the house looks really, and I was not in the last meeting. The house looks very tall to me for that street. Can you talk to me about houses on the same side of the street where elevation, height?
Okay, so the houses on that block face, there has not been a lot of redevelopment yet there. There is a new construction to the right. But it is predominantly story and a half on the block and the block face. This will be taller than the neighboring houses. But we believe in keeping with the story and a half character that we have in the neighborhood. If you go over a little bit to adjacent streets, you'll see more two-story homes that are taller than what we've proposed. But we kept this story and a half to be more consistent with the median homes.
It just looks really like a lot of roof to me. I mean, there's more roof than there is main body of the house.
And this will be Cedar Shake. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, it just looks really disproportionate to me with roof. Why does it have to be this tall?
I guess the, at the last meeting, that the board seemed comfortable with the the main house and that they also seem.
As I said, I wasn't in the last meeting. Why does it need to be this tall?
Come again.
Why does it need to be this tall? It's so much taller than the dormers, the roof line. Why does the house have to be this tall? I mean, it's going to dwarf the house to the right of it.
So it had been shorter, slightly in the, what, in west middle. It was two feet, two and a half feet shorter because it had the 1212 roof. We raised the pitch to 1412 roof to accommodate the steeper roof in back.
And Bunny, to update, you know, it was a French Norman roof, what we were trying to go for. And what they had before seemed a little bit flat, and we had requested it to sort of be more of that steep French Norman roof. Is that, Jeanette, what you remember?
Pitch of it, it's just the overall height of it looks very disproportionate to me. I understand you want a steeply pitched roof with this style. But it just looks very, very tall relative to the house. I'm afraid we're going to look at this house and see roof. Even if it shake, how pretty, but still just that's a lot of roof, and I'm worried about what it does to the other houses around it height-wise. Because this house is already, the lot is a lot higher than the house to the right of it as it is. How big is this lot?
I believe it's under an acre.
It's 0.57 acres.
That's a huge house for that lot.
Well, I think Lyle can speak to that issue because there is, there are, you know, allowable sizes.
Yeah, it just, it looks very tall for that street.
Chris, would it help out if those dormers came up? I mean, how far is that window seal on that dormer up there from the finished floor of the second story? Let's see, that that would help to diminish the proportion between the, you know, the the downspout and the eve.
I'm worried the dormers will get top-heavy though, too. You have to be careful.
Well, I mean, if they just bring that consistent line across there and and just move the dormers up.
Well, are the, I mean, if the dormers are on the face of the house, is that connected? And it just becomes they, they're moved up onto the roof, I think, is what Gaven is saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of being connected to the face of the house.
Just move them up. Yeah, did anybody else? I mean, do you, y'all look at the proportions there of how much the the height of the house, what portion of that is in roof alone? That's a lot of roof.
Well, it's a perspective. I mean, that is a flat perspective that that roof is, will be receding.
But I thought it was pretty steeply pitched. That's what y'all were saying.
Well, look at the side elevation. It shows you how it's going to be pitched.
Yeah, it just seems like if you were able, Chris, I don't know, is it possible to move those dormers up and
so the, for the windows and dormers, the heads of the windows are 8'4" and the sills are 2'4". So we can move them up, you know, maybe.
Usually, usually you want to be like, I mean, a typical one that I'm dealing with is is 2'6" kind of 30 inches off the ground for that bottom of the window with that. I mean, in the saturation, I agree. It looks a little, little off in the side elevation, too. Seems like if it were moved up and be more in proportion with the house.
Yeah, so our window sill is 28 inches off the floor right now, so it could be moved up a little bit, but not a tremendous amount.
Is that you drawing, Lyle? Was that?
Yes.
Oh, see, that looks, that feels better. And I don't know if you, for the front elevation, I don't know if you break that. If you want to make all the breaks in the the eve, or if you just want to take that consistently across.
Does that say faux chimneys?
Correct. There are, there are not fireplaces underneath those. Those are decorative chimneys. They're not functional.
And then the one on the screen porch, you've added a chimney to that. Is that now a full masonry?
That will be painted stucco, if that's allowed. Could be full masonry if that was preferred over stucco.
But that's a functional, that's a functional.
Yes, a wood burner.
Okay. But inside the house, there will be no chimneys? There will be no fireplaces?
Yes, it is. It's just a vent, vent-free.
Ooh. Okay.
I mean, we typically will go vent-free inside and wood burner outside.
Yeah, I don't like faux chimneys on a house. I don't think that's up to our standard of building here and and quality of what we're looking for in construction.
I guess you all have a chimney pot in mind. Those seem to be in proportion with what the chimney is. I don't know if it says decorative terracotta preferred, but I just want to make sure in the end what that actually is because it's it seems like it's pretty lonely on the side elevation.
It'll be aluminum, decorative aluminum, and you can get them, whether or not they're painted aluminum or they're copper. It'll be one of the two. Similar to what we have at 1210 nickel.
So is that, is that just the cap? It'll have like the screening on it?
It's a full, full chimney chimney pot, and it does have a screen at the top, but it's a full decorative chimney pot.
Okay.
Is there anyone else in attendance who would like to speak for or against this proposal? If not, let's close the public portion. And the chair would entertain a motion for.
Or maybe we need to have some discussion about it first.
Make the motion first, and then we have the discussion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion not to approve this. I think it looked, well, I'll make that motion, and then we can discuss it.
Okay, is there a second? Then the motion fails for lack of second.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept it with stipulations. Is that possible?
Is there a second?
I'm second, Dad. That's more, you know, that's the way I'm leaning is that there still need to be some tweaks, but I want to open it up for discussion.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm kind of like Bunny. Those dormers look a bit funny sitting that close to the floor.
Well, the mat, the massing of the roof, you know.
Are we in discussion now?
Well, I guess so.
Yeah.
Well, that's my thing. Can we, can we ask Doug a parliamentary question? Do we have to have a, I can't we just have a discussion about this before a motion is made? Because I mean, I may want to have a motion for, instead of a motion.
What? I mean, yes, many boards do that, but the preferred way to do this is to get a motion first, and then you know, you can add, without it being a formal amendment, Gaven could have made some added some
Stipulations.
Conditions to his motion, and somebody could have seconded that. I just, that's my preference and recommendation is that you get a motion first and then have discussion. It sounds like you're inclined to add some conditions to the motion, so right now you have a motion on the floor. Do you have a second?
I seconded it.
Okay, well, you're just, why don't you discuss it, and then, and then if you've got a motion to approve and a second. So discuss it, and then you may want to make some formal amendments to add some conditions that you want to the, to the most to the, to the approval.
Can we tie that to the the conditions and then Lyle would be able to just check those off the box one, before they actually get a permit?
Of course, of course. That's what you're here to do. And don't forget the, all the conditions and guidelines on new construction at pages 14 through 16 of your guidelines. You might want to make reference to those if need be to, you know, explain exactly what you want to do. The applicant's entitled to clarity, and the city needs clarity, too.
Yeah. And I feel like at our last meeting, we'd made a bunch of sort of conditions to bring back for this, this go-round. I thought.
That's correct.
And I think those were just suggestions and
Not conditions.
Presumably, the applicant is trying to meet those, but if you want them to be included as additional conditions or something, you need to go ahead and say that. That's how I would look at it, Mr. Chairman. Somewhere, somewhere on this screen is my chairman. I don't see him right now.
Scroll left, right.
I think my problem with it might be similar to Bunny's with, with, I'm just going to say my thoughts. You know, there, there are some representative houses that were sighted and pictures of that. So at 4305 Forsyth, those dormers are sitting up on the roof. They're not married to the face of the house, which is, I think, what Bunny's problem is, is that when it's down so far and it's married to the face of the house, the roof pitch looks very large once you then put two and a half more feet on it. So at 4305 Forsyth, those dormers would be on the roof, and it breaks the roof up. And then at 921 Westview, you have a roof massing of the, of the main portion of the house. Then the roof steps down, you know, for the side portions. If if you're looking at the side massing of this house, I mean, the back portion is right up at the top of this front section. That, that's a large. Uh, fr- fr- front section, that that's a large, a very large. Um, addition on the back of that front section, it's it's not. You know, it it is, it is equal in mass to the front, normally that roof would step down some. And so when I'm looking at the roof heights, is that just a lot of empty attic up there, I mean. That's what I don't really understand, why is it go all the way to the top with the tip there? Why is not the sit the the rear portion subservient to the main massing of the of the house? Yeah, that's what I'm asking. What's up in there right there?
Maybe I I want to dive in and be sure, because I'm reviewing my notes.
I'll try to answer if I don't cut out here. So. We could, if you want to, if you look at the rear elevation. There's kind of a. Yeah. So if. We could make the area kind of to the left, a lower slope to where it would lay up. Kind of the main body of the hip roof there, if you wanted to. Lower that portion.
Because that that's all attic, right? I mean, what's up there?
It's just attic space. And we had, it had been more subservient last time, but I raised the pitch because the board had asked for that to make it more consistent with the main house. Um, so it is taller and larger than it was last time, that that was kind of the. Direction we're asked to explore, I thought, so.
Here's what, I'm reviewing my notes from last month's meeting and the requests that we made. And. In particular, we had an emphasis to the rear elevation. And its roof pitch, uh, and how it tied into the main body of the front of the house, and we did ask the applicant to raise that pitch, which he's done. We also asked for the eve condition of that addition. Or the rear. Uh, component to be more incongruent with the style of the front of the house. So I don't fault the applicant for raising the the pitch of the rear portion of the house. A, we asked him to do it, and B, I think. Its pitch is a better compliment to the steeper pitch at the front of the house. What? Um, I'm still. Troubled with is that the eve conditions of that hip roof area don't seem to tie into the front. Um, body of the house, they seem again to be some dissimilar, and maybe they're. How they're treated, go, well, if you go to the front elevation or the side elevations. I I find what the applicant has done with the front of the house and cleaning up some things that we asked him to do, getting near successful. But it's. We asked him to. Be consistent with those eve conditions. And the curving of those eve conditions down where the the roof meets the gutter there. Um, I I don't find, this is just me personally, I I don't find. The mass of the ruse roof exhausted from the front, I think there's some proportions that could be improved on the dormers. In comparison to some of his inspiration photos, I think it's a, it's a similar amount of roof. What, this is not a large house. From my perspective, it. Along that street, which is a street composed of mainly fifties and sixties ranches. That suffer from their own composition issues, one of which I think the city will see continued. Replacement of those, I don't think those residences along the street. Uh, categorize themselves as significant or worthy of conservation, I'm I'm on the web now just looking up and down the street to be more specific. Um, the the house to the right is a new house, the house to the left is an existing, probably fifty's or sixty's area ranch. How the how the back. I I'm troubled by the the maybe the hip roof versus the gable of the main body of the house from the back elevation.
I've been a, if I can interject, it had been a rear facing gable previously, and we were asked to change it to hip at the last meeting.
Has to be changed to a hip?
Yes.
It's how it's transitioning itself, Chris, into. The eve that just seems to be dissimilar to. The the front, along with how the the screened in porch eve details are dissimilar, I don't say, I mean, they have to be exactly the same, but. That pitch of four and twelve seems. A bit out of character with the steeply pitched front roof. Broadly, the applicant has made improvements to the window composition.
I would agree with that.
Both sides. I I think there's some minor tweaks to to this back area that would only improve upon what they've done at the front.
I I think the dormers in the front need a lot of, you know, looking at those two examples on. Nine twenty one Westview, like you were talking about, Jeanette, and on Forsyth. You know, the the smaller houses, they, I can't imagine four twenty one Westview, those dormers being lower. In that profile, or we're on Forsyth in the examples. It just feels like the roof would diminish some if we're able to get those dormers up into a reasonable height.
You're giving your referencing the inspiration photos?
Yeah, yeah, I think there's neighborhood photos that you can see those dormers that are on the neighborhood photos and. You know, the one on Forsyth and Westview four third. Forty three oh five, and then nine twenty one, nine twenty one is probably a similar, similar size house, I would think, it seems like it is.
How many square feet is this house? It's not a big house.
I mean, it seemed like it was thirty five hundred last time we looked at it.
It it's larger than that, it's. The first floor is just over twenty five hundred square feet, first floor is twenty three hundred square feet, so we're about. Oh, forty eight hundred square feet in the first two floors, and then another eight hundred in basements.
Yeah, that's a little house. Oh, that's, yeah, that's on the plan.
Uh, she eight one oh one.
A lot of house on that lot. Well, can we ask Lyle, I mean, is is, does it comply?
I haven't looked at it as far as FAR and footprint, I don't usually take a good look at that until they come. Pull a permit or go to the Board of Zoned Appeal. I don't believe I've been given any sort of calculations yet.
The calculations there on she A one oh one, if you want to look. Square footed and theta.
Yeah, you got the allowable being fifty six hundred, and the actual being somewhere around fifty four hundred for the FAR. Is that correct?
Yes, because the basement space does not count towards FAR.
And you've got a a mere. Like eleven. Square feet. Level on your footprint to go.
Seven, almost seven thousand under roof. Is that what that says?
Correct, counting first floor, second floor, garage and basement, basin space, and covered porches.
Yeah, that's a lot of house. Well, that's just, it's the massing, that's, that's why I have a little bit of issue with how big it is masked up out of the ground. Because that that basement is exposed in the back. I mean, it's not in, it's not under the ground, it's not an in-ground basement.
Will the house comply with the allowable FAR?
Yes, we're at fifty four fifty four for FAR and allowable is fifty six eighteen.
Is that including the attic, you got a lot of attic up there that's got to be over five feet six? I'm not sure you've got the attic figured into that FAR.
So, sorry, it's breaking up a little bit, so. The attic. Uh, let's see. The attic above the main house is six hundred and twenty eight square feet.
That's at a height of five, six and greater, even though you raised the pitch since the last meeting?
Yes, sir.
Um, concerns that I have with it, I think that right off the bat, I don't like the idea of faux chimneys, I just don't think that speaks to quality. Um, I'm concerned to, could we go back to what the working wood burning fireplace is made of, did it say stucco over frame?
Yes.
Is that allowed, Lyle?
I just pulled the building material list here, chimneys located on exterior walls constructed of materials other than masonry. Or modular masonry like an isocurrent type may not be constructed, chimneys may not be faced. In number seven and eight, number seven is siding material, which we don't have here. Number eight is veneer, no outside material shall be thin veneer, brick, stone, cultured stone, or synthetic stone. Unless wrapping an interior chimney fluid chase that penetrates the roof.
So it sounds like the faux chimneys are not allowed.
Correct.
Would they not be allowed because of the stucco, or would they be allowed if they were brick?
You can't be faux chimneys, period.
Well, it's. But no one knows, I mean, if they're faux or not, if it's just a chimney stack.
Well, nobody may know, too, if stucco, if they don't go up there and knock on it, if stucco is stucco or drive it as far as looking, but that's not what we're. We're looking for quality here.
Well, I don't think that, respectfully, I don't think that speaks to quality, if you have a chimney stack that's brick with a with a decorative cap. I don't think that speaks to the quality versus its actual function.
I don't think you can support a brick chimney that's faux, that doesn't have a base to it.
Well, you support the roof is the way you do it. You reinforce the roof, I mean.
He's correct on that.
Yeah.
So I guess what I'm, what I'm saying, if this is a decorative feature, and you're not subtracting from the. The methods in which you 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 constructed, I don't, I don't necessarily.
Why are you doing that faux?
Well, it's just to add character to the house.
Well, why not make add character to the inside?
Because the way the house is built with the floor plan, you can't carry the chimney all the way through the second floor.
And it's a lot less expensive to do it that way. I I mean, that's the bottom line, is the money, let's face it.
Well, it's not, I mean, we're not going to have two wood burning fireplaces in the house. So it's not about the money at all, I mean, that's a very minor detail there in terms of the cost to construct.
I think that I'm, so that's, those are concerns I have, again, back to the dormers, they don't look accurate to me. The it, a side elevation, so it looks like you've got stucco, you've got half timbering, you've got. Clapboard, you've got, then I saw a mortar rub somewhere.
Brick veneer, brick veneer.
Very near, I mean, we just got a lot going on there.
I would, I would like to clarify, there won't be any stucco on the house, it it'll be brick.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought the chimney said they were stucco in this chimney, and the the you wanted to do a stucco in the fireplace on the back, too.
No, I think when that question was first posed, Chris said stucco, or it can be masonry, which will be brick.
Okay, well, that's not what the plan says, flip to that rear elevation where the. That fireplace description is. Painted stucco.
Correct.
I think John is saying they're willing to change that, given the objection. With the stucco.
The other part, too, is I'm looking at the side elevation of that chimney on the screen porch. Doesn't. It doesn't work with the rear elevation. And then the side elevation, you're showing her chimney coming up out of the roof, I guess, like that. And then on the rear elevation, which is a two oh, whatever that is, mine get cut off, rear elevation, it doesn't, it doesn't read that way. It it shows it all proud.
Yeah, yeah.
And there there's no. I mean, is it flush, or does it come proud of that, and the plan, it shows it flush. Um, but the 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 board doesn't come beyond that.
That's not accurate, you're right.
Right. That's the, I neglected to update that when I moved the fireplace, but the rake on the. Uh, side elevation of the porch should be made flush to where it's flush with chimney.
What are you calling the architectural style of this?
It'd be French Norman.
I'm sorry, what was it?
You had a list of this French Norman.
Well, the the motion on the floor is to approve this design with changes. So can we? Make a cohesive list of what we want changed?
And now that would be, Mr. Chairman, that would be taken up as an amendment when you get there, if you get there, then I would suggest that be. Introduced as an amendment, you may already, you may have assumed that, I just want to add that.
I don't think we've got an amendment proposed, or or are you suggesting?
Say you've got a main motion, and if you come up, you might say, well, I moved to amend the main motion, all for the following conditions, one to people about to submit that. So that's, that's all I'm saying at this point for a little.
Doug, do I have to do that, or can anybody do that?
Anybody can do that, any anyone can do that.
Okay.
I'm just concerned about with stipulations, y'all, because these are major changes to the front and the roof lines and the things that we're discussing, and. The materials, I mean, I I just, this is, that would be quite, I I'm not comfortable voting for something if I can't see what this facade is going to look like.
So Doug, how do we, like, like, does this motion need to, if if we were elected to do a deferral? And does, how does this motion die, by vote, vote?
No.
A motion. That's chairman.
Bunny, Bunny makes her amendment to defer based on her list of things that needs to be changed. The committee, the board will then vote on whether to accept that amendment. And then go back and vote on the original motion.
Oh.
Hopefully to turn it down.
Now, let me, let me correct that, Mr. Chairman, with a motion, a motion to defer is a separate motion, so. That would take precedence over the main motion, she can make a motion to defer. With whatever reason she has, and then you take that up with precedence, and then that would, the matter would be deferred, so that that wouldn't go through the amendment process, I'm sorry, not. That's a different motion.
So do I make a motion first, is that what we?
That's what you want to do.
Well, I make a motion that we defer, because I think the changes that we're recommending. Well, I make a motion that we defer because I think the changes that we're recommending are are pretty major to the way this house looks from the front, and I'm not comfortable approving conditionally something I haven't seen this much.
Um, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, um, all in favor of deferring the project for sixty days. We'll do a roll call vote. Bunny?
Aye.
Uh, Jeanette?
Aye.
Gaven?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Mal votes aye. So, uh, as a summary, can, for, for John's benefit, can we summarize what it is we want to see addressed this time around?
Sure.
Sorry, certainly.
I would, I would start with the dormer study for, for one, for me, just getting those dorm, dormers further up and a little more aesthetic and then character with the other houses on, in that neighborhood.
I would like to see a clarification of materials to address the faux chimneys and the, uh, fireplace on the back.
I would, uh, ask the applicant to revisit the rear e blinds of the rear wing to be more incongruent with the front style.
And while was it, or Doug, is it appropriate that we make sure that this meets the FAR?
We don't have any.
I mean, while can make that ca- calculation in between the meetings. Doesn't, he'll have to advise the applicant, but I don't think you have to.
Okay.
Specific conditions like that.
I just wanna make sure it does if we can, just because I know it affects the visual, the aesthetics of this house.
I, I'm, I'm in agreement with Gavin that I think if the massing is over what it's allowed, tailoring that down now is gonna benefit the applicant and it's going to create a better house that's a little more in keeping with, um, you know, the two that I cited, uh, that he gave representative pictures of. It's gonna look more like those if the massing is smaller.
And with that, I'd like to say that on their inspirational board that was presented by Parks and Land, you know, there, there's a representation of these, uh, copper chimney pots. And then, um, we're, we're getting sort of aluminum, uh, as, as called out, you know, in the meeting. So I just wanna be consistent if we're, if they're gonna do copper or aluminum or just to make sure that the materials are consistent. I think we would prefer copper.
Gavin, what, what was the copper to in relation to?
Uh, it's chimney pots. They, they show it on their inspiration or their exterior finish options as copper, and then they're calling out, um, they're saying six inch aluminum optional copper for gutters, I guess. And it says chimney material metal optional copper, but, um, I don't know what, I thought chimney material meant, meant that it was either masonry or stucco or whatever.
Good. So I have four stipulations. Anyone else?
Did you put the massing in there as part of, Jeanette addressed the massing? I just wanna make sure that that's included, that we are concerned about the massing of this house and that there's no, uh, the, the, I think that Ron is the one who said just the, 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 the back of the house does not look subservient to the front of the house.
I've got.
Good, okay.
Okay, so, um, council, um, do we now need to go back and vote down the original motion?
No, 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 no. The deferral, yeah, you defer. And then the original motion will have to be made again. It, it doesn't survive. So when it comes back, you'll have to get a motion in a second on the new plan.
Got you. Very good. All right, Lyle, number two, new business?
First item under new business is the application for a certificate of appropriateness for Jay Fulmer, eleven oh six Nickel Lane for demolition, listing home, property of conservation, and construct a new single family home. Jay, you are up.
Uh, hello, everybody. Thank you for hearing our case. Um, Lyle gave me a call an hour ago or so, and um, I, I think I maybe misunderstood the concept, uh, the conceptual elevations. We had prepared some hand sketches on the concept, so uh, it may be appropriate to break ours up into a demolition application, um, and then a, a separate approval of the future home, but um, nonetheless, I would, I would like to be able to move forward with removal of the structures. It's, it's somewhat of a hazard. Um, actually, it, it could barely be any more of a hazard. Uh, but we, uh, I, I would also appreciate feedback on the architectural at this point. Um, but we, we bought this property back in September. Um, it's intended to be a personal residence. Uh, it's a great street that, that I know the lot next to me is gonna be coming before you in the next month or two, and the the lot to the north of us was, um, was built just a few years ago. Um, but it, it was somewhat just unkept over the last fifteen years or so, and we at first wanted to put a little bit of work into it, um, and have a longer term plan for it. But there's been so much smoke damage, uh, just tobacco smoke that it, it's just beyond repair on the inside. Um, and so we, we paused a little bit and have been working on plans, uh, for the last six months. And, you know, we really like the direction we're heading. Um, you know, and we hope you do too. So I'm happy to answer any questions on the package that we submitted.
Can you present the, the reasons for demolition? You know, the age? Can you
do a presentation for why it should be able to be demolished?
Sure. It, it was built in nineteen fifty-one. Um, the, it, it has eight foot ceilings. And the pictures that I included had three or four big loads of clean out, but wow, you can feel free to scroll through some of those. Um, the, the previous owner was a hoarder and a smoker. And it's, it's just not, it would cost five hundred dollars a foot to repair. And, you know, the walls are yellow, the, everything about it, it's just not really inhabitable. And, you know, with the low ceilings and you know, all these other factors, it, it, you would never, it would never appraise for the value of money you have to put in it in order to make it a viable project for anybody personally or as a development opportunity.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have to add, I've been in this home. And I wouldn't suggest going in without a hazmat suit.
What, Lyle waived all liability before entering?
Lord, lord.
I don't, I don't remember reviewing any such waiver, uh, Lyle. Talk, talk to me afterwards. Talk to me afterwards, okay?
We, we had a gentleman's agreement.
Let's see, um.
So no part of this house will be saved and no, no basement or foundations or any, it'll be all taken away?
Well, we're, we're gonna be putting the driveway back in its existing location, but widening it a little bit. And so, you know, a portion of the subgrade and, and base for the driveway is intended to be used. Um, you know, we're hoping to go back with a, a pea gravel driveway, but you know, I, I'm not a developer and this is not a for-profit situation and I don't have an unlimited budget. And so I, you know, it could turn out to be asphalt um, or some sort of decorative concrete. I know we don't want a, you know, fresh poured white concrete driveway. Um, but we want something, you know, the, the goal of my life is to build a nice home that you can't tell is a new home, you know, one that looks like it's been there for a long time. Um, and it has a lot of character to it, so.
And is this the house that you all, that, that you submitted from the, the Carlisle Moore Architects? Is that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Cause that's a very attractive house.
Yeah. He does photos, Lyle.
Well, let, uh, let's first rule on the demolition part. Don't, before we get into this.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna make a motion to approve that demolition.
I'll second that.
Uh, before we do that, is there anyone else in attendance who would like to speak for or against this project? You're not hearing any, uh, let's close the public portion. So, uh, Bunny?
Or Jeanette?
I think, well, I, I'd now like to make a motion to approve the demolition of this property as it is not a property of, um, significance, um, built after nineteen fifty and does not in my mind have any contributing to any architectural significance in the neighborhood.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, Ron?
Aye.
Uh, Gaven?
Aye.
Bunny?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Mal votes aye. So the chair will entertain a motion to defer approval of the, uh, proposed new construction?
Now, is that because of the proponent would like to defer it or would he like us to look at it now?
I, I mean, I.
I don't think there's enough that information.
Okay.
I'd love for you just to go ahead and approve it, but, but Lyle told me that, you know, there might be reason not to, and, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable putting my faith in Lyle's hands if there's you know, any, any conditions. Um, but, you know, we, thi- this is where we've been starting. We're trying to get some costing done on the project and you know, my big fear is I have to, have to value engineer some things out, which I know I would need to come back to you guys for. Um, it's not gonna hurt my start time i- if I need to defer one meeting. I noticed that the one before me deferred for sixty days. I'm not sure if that's a, a requirement.
But you, you could still come in thirty days.
Yeah, you can come back in a month. Yeah.
Okay. Um, you know, I'm happy to go through and discuss these and then come back when, when we do have, you know, further advanced drawings. Um, you know, preliminary feedback is always helpful. You know, one, one thing that we realized when we were starting to develop the roof plan is our, um, the, the little room above the, uh, above the garage isn't gonna be as much square footage as we thought it would be because of roof pitches and height limitations. Um, so, you know, there is value in it, in, in advancing the plans.
And so is it insuff- sufficient because there's not a material list and there just has not been everything submitted that?
We, we called out everything in the application and we called out the, the front elevation is, is detailed, but in order to meet the decided rear elevation requirements, I read it as conceptual elevations and I thought that what was submitted would, would be sufficient. Um, but Lyle told me he got a couple of calls that, you know, just to put it on my radar, it might need to furl just so that I could make sure that all the windows will land where we're shown and that the scale is appropriate and, you know, that it's just more defined than, than using a hand sketch program.
Okay.
But that, that's, you know, it's up to y'all. If you're.
Starting point, but I think it would be bad precedent for us not to start discussing these before we have all the information.
Um, I don't know if you have a lack of information.
But I think we.
The windows wouldn't move or, you know, there wouldn't be a change to it. There might change what.
I think proportionally, we're gonna need a lot more dimensions to this thing.
Exactly, exactly. So.
And you can see on some of the other presentations, uh, you know, historically, we've required, you know, a roof heights, uh, and also window proportions so that we can under that architecturally.
I, I think we'll need, um, in fairness to all of the other applicants, we're gonna need drawings that are incongruent with the front elevation versus hand sketches.
Right.
I don't agree with Bunny. I don't think we need to establish a precedence of taking hand sketches. Broadly, I think the, where the applicant's headed with the style and the, and the architecture, uh, I can compliment that. But up to the board to decide and I'm, somebody wants to make a, a motion for it, but, uh, I don't think.
Got a motion to defer on the floor, don't you?
Yeah.
A second.
Um, Ron?
Aye.
Uh, Bunny?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Um, Gaven?
Aye.
And Mal. Mal votes aye. Um, and for comments, uh, for the benefit of the petition, uh, I've jotted down, we needed dimensions, we needed, uh, more details on materials. Um, information, um, more information, period, on the, um, how the house is gonna go together.
He's got a pretty extensive list on materials here. He put it on a separate page here. Okay.
I think it's dimension. Yeah, I think I, I would also be comfortable with saying the direction that it's headed, I think is very good. Uh, the massing of it looks very nice. I would like to see everything dimensioned out so that we can see what the roof pitches are, uh, the height, you know, material on each element uh, called out. So I do feel like it's something, we will give you sixty days, but, you know, you certainly could come back in thirty days with a little bit more detailed plan.
Do we topo and, um, lot dimensions grading plans, any of that?
Uh, it's included. And I did mention that I was reusing some of the landscaping on site and we were actually able to relocate all those boxwoods along the front of the house to the rear um, already, just to, it worked out well timing with weather and, and that wasn't necessarily a, a board approved item. And so we've, so far it's been successful.
Great.
That works out. There's a large white masonry wall along the rear property line that goes to the majority of it. And so now we actually have a really mature boxwood hedgerow. So.
That's wonderful. We love it when people redo.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I just hope that they, they stay alive. Um, but I, and I think they will. But, uh, yeah, it's, it's exciting that that worked out.
I'll just make sure on your grading though, it should, you know, on this grading plan, it's showing three feet of grade across the front from the front door to the left. And that the really nice elevation, you have like one front elevation. It's showing it pretty flat across there. So just making sure that, you know, we get accurate, um, sort of grades as relationship to the house.
It looks like, do I see aggregate concrete driveway? I don't think we allow aggregate, do we?
Yes.
We do allow aggregate?
Yes, it's pretty prominent.
I have top cast aggregate in my driveway.
It just depends on the type of aggregate, I guess.
It can be well done or not well done.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Well, I haven't seen any brown aggregate driveways approved, so.
Well, well, mine's gray.
Yours is lovely, Jeanette. Thank you, Bunny.
Okay, we'll see you next month.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item under new business is the application for a certificate of appropriateness for Steve Kates.
Next item under new business is the application for certificate of appropriateness for Steve Kate's three twenty-five Walnut Drive. For demolition of an existing home, property conservation and construct a new single family home. Ron Ferris.
Thank you, Lyle, uh, thank you, board members. Um, along with Ann Day, landscape architect, we're asking the board to consider. Kate's application to demolish an existing residence and construct a new residence at three twenty-five Walnut Avenue. Our research indicates the residence was established July thirtieth nineteen sixty-five. And that's according to, uh, Metro Parcel Viewer. Um, I, I have not found any other evidence of it being constructed earlier, though it. It indicates when you visit the site that it might have been, but that's the latest we could find, so. It falls in the category of, is it a prop- property worthy of conservation? From my analysis, um, the residence does not rise to the level of being worthy of conservation. Wow, there's some existing photos and, um, think you've got those up. Broadly, I don't think the, the res- the current residence possesses integrity of design, materials, workmanship. Setting, feeling, or an association from a style from the date of the period of construction. I think the pictures, uh, can show some overall aesthetic that is austere, unadorned. It lacks composition and proportion in both its horizontal massing and vertical massing. It lacks any details that tie it to a specific style and it lacks quality of materials. From what I can see, the brick used was a very common brick, lacks texture or appearance of being handmade and. When you're on top of it, it has a very poor tonal value and color value. I think, if you look at the picture to the left, it also suffers strongly from a, what I think is a siding issue. Where the finished floor level was placed nearly at grade. And therefore it lacks an identifiable base. It suffers from an eve line. Or its eve lines being placed quite close to the second story windows. Making it appear like a hat that's been pulled too close to one's eyes. Again, poor composition and proportion. Ceiling heights are approximately eight feet. And its foundation and footing was found to be of minimal depth. I, Lyle, I sent you an email if we need to reference it, but it's got a picture of some, uh, excavation. That, uh, the owner did or the applicant did showing approximately a six inch depth of. A footing and it's composed of suspect and deficient mortar. It's telegraphing evidence of structural movement, floor systems are sagging and. Seeing, there's the picture. Granted, not a, a real clear picture, but digging into the footing, it appears that there was approximately a five to six inch mortar base laid before. Uh, laying block, it's, um. We would not be building on top of that foundation if we were to renovate this house, let me say that. Internally, all systems, structural, mechanical, electrical, appear to be mostly original and deficient. In summary, I do not think the box checks any box that would make it worthy of conservation. With that, I'll leave it to the board to discuss.
One thing, uh, Ron, are you sure of that? I, I have something that says it was built in nineteen thirty-eight.
You know, we had rumblings of that same conversation, but I can't find. And nor can the applicant find, uh, evidence of that. It, it, let me say this, if it was built in thirty-eight, it's an anomaly.
Yeah.
As a style, I don't even see anything stylistically that comes out of that period.
Not, well, I mean, I don't think that, I think that your other arguments are. Valid anyway, but I just wanna make sure that we've got the correct year on here.
I, I agree a hundred percent. Um, I've got, Lyle, I sent to you what we found. Through the Nashville map parcel viewer that shows date established as July thirtieth nineteen sixty-five.
Is that an email that I received today?
Uh, no, I sent it a while back, but I did resend it today. Um, and I can send it again, but it's a, it's a parcel viewer of when you Google search this on metro mapping. Or metro parcel viewer.
Trying to pull it up now. Looks like it came from Jeff Haymer, perhaps?
That's, hold on to that one, that's, uh, that's got a better back view. Um, and you can look at this back view. I, I just don't see evidence that this thing was built in the thirties.
It does not look it to me.
No.
Um. And I'll say I do appreciate the very thorough, point by point, uh, argument for demolition. Regardless of this age, but you know, i- if it were even nineteen thirty-eight, that. That's the kind of, that's the kind of argument we wanna hear is all the different points being it of why. Uh, the architectural style is not anything that, I don't see that it's anything worthy of preservation, conservation.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it's. I, uh, issues particularly with the foundation and, and such, I think in the ceiling heights, I mean, we've allowed others. With those issues that were older than this house to be torn down, so, um.
There's no, no architectural, um, character to this.
Um.
Motion approved.
Well, before we make a motion, don't.
We need to.
I think we have to do.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Chairman, run the meeting. Thank, thank you. Anyone in attendance who would like to speak for or against this proposal? If not, uh, we'll close the public portion, um, and the chair will entertain a motion. To, uh, approve the demolition of this house.
I wanna, um, clarify that we're asking for. Public comments on the demolition only, not on the new construction. We will discuss that next if that. Um, if, if the demolition is allowed to move forward, we will then discuss the plans.
So, do I make a motion for the demolition, Mal?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for, uh, demo.
And I second it. Bunny seconds it.
Um, Jeanette?
I.
Bunny?
I.
Gavin?
I.
And, uh, Mal votes aye. So, uh, presentation Ron on the, uh, proposed new construction?
Wow, we wanna stay on the screen that you've got and move to. I think there's ins- inspiration images. Thank you. The proposed new residence will be in the style of English cottage. The top two pictures give some insight to and speci- specificity to. The, uh, spectrum of materials, maybe spectrum's the wrong word, but. The, the house will be adorned in, uh, a lap siding with a limestone base, which I'll get to in a second, but. This house, uh, the top two photos gives some insight into the level of details for the bracketing and roof, uh, details. Identifying characteristics of the style will be, um. Generally, you'll find English cottages in the cross or eight shape plan, and in our case, the house will be eight shape. With a nod or emphasis to cement or symmetry at the front. Proportion and composition follows English tradition of steeply pitched roofs. Lyle, if you might move to the front elevation. On this, uh, sheet. Proportion and composition follows English tradition of steeply pitched roofs with forward facing gables. Embiding both minimal eve overhangs with minimal cornice details. And overhanging eaves supported by detailed bracketed, uh, wood timbers. As well as floor overhangs supported by decorative pendants, which are on the right side of this. Zoom in, you'll see some detailing with, that is, uh, very much in line with the English cottage characteristic. Windows will be both double hung and picture units with classically proportioned panes. Ie, the panes will be taller than wide. Extra materials are gonna be composed of a consistent, uh, and identifiable base of native limestone. Simple lap siding. We in- indicate in our application wood shake or slate, we are, um. In this presentation, we are going to say wood shake. Windows will be cased in wood with a minimal or two scale crown cap. Nothing overt, just quiet simplicity to that detail. Overall, a strong effort was made to ensure all four elevations present a composition of balance and scale. Now, you can pan through the elevations if you'd like. Uh, balance and scale where windows are aligned and centered throughout the compositions. You see on this elevation, they're aligned and centered with the garage doors from the base up. The, additionally, a strong emphasis was placed on including details that will enrich in the simple style. Bays will have, again, simple classical detailing. With flat panel parapet walls. Inclusion of curved wood brackets when eaves are extended to improve vertical proportion. All shed dormers. Will include a simple curve shape to them, so they will not be a single pitched shed. And they will also include just a simple cove crown at their eve lines, so no overt ornamentation. Or extraneous components of detailing. In summary, our hope is for the residence to present a, a simple, yet adorned style of composition of materials found throughout Belmeade. In the twenties and thirties, limestone base, simple clabbered siding. Simple proportion pane windows, wood shake roof. Nothing overt or extraneous in its detailing. Both, the front and the back elevations, I think, will be. It's pre- prominent, the main elevations of this presentation site would probably be its front and back. You can see the back of this residence from Linwood Boulevard. There's another way to say that. Uh, you might go to the site plan. Which is on Ann Day's drawings.
I'm sorry.
Um, Ann Day's package.
Okay, alright.
The house will include. Entry from Walnut. Uh, off center, but on the low right side of the topography, and it will be on center to the main dining room. Window, you see this, there will be a, uh, organized motor court allowing for the parking of vehicles. Approximately two vehicles at the front and the driveway peels around. And down where the garage doors will be placed underneath or in the basement level. The rear of the, um, site plan will include a small pool, all within setback. And it includes stone site walls. That you can see in Ann's, and has a front and rear rendering. Giving some color to the landscaping and the site walls. This colored version is a little bit more insight to the, uh. The clarity of proposed landscaping and the buffering of the motor court. From either neighbor. Uh, if you pan down again and look at the, her elevations. You can clearly see that the house now includes a base of both. Stone walls and landscaping. And then on the right, you can see how it's making its way down and underneath for the, uh, the garage. One item of clarity is, is that the, the triple dormers. On this was an earlier scheme, we're actually doing a simple shed dormer.
Okay.
At this presentation, so my, my elevations are the priority. This emphasis is for Ann is from site walls. And landscaping.
Okay.
Similar, uh, at the back is there's a little bit of, uh, additional. Um, composition to the back elevation, windows on the right and left gables, uh, the second story. But again, you can see the. The simple, nice stone walls that help create the terrace level for the pool. With that, I will open it up for questions.
Um, Ron, what, what's the size of this lot and the house is a, a little over seven thousand square feet, correct?
Uh, specifically, the lot size is thirty-one thousand seven square feet. It has an FAR allowable FAR of six thousand seventy-six square feet. It's.
And you're, you're in that.
They are, my FAR of the first two floors.
Yeah.
Is six thousand and just over, uh, forty, so we are approaching the maximum FAR, the. The base, the house does include a full basement, but that's not required to be calculated in the FAR.
Right.
I would also add, not, may have come up in one of the earlier presentations, but this lot. Is under forty thousand square feet. And the city of Belmeade ordinance, when it was passed, allowed for. These smaller lots to have a larger FAR. I can dive into that specific, but lots over forty thousand square feet have a multiplication factor. Um, of, uh, point one nine six. I think that's right, is that right, Lyle?
Yes.
I'm sort of talking off the top of here, and lots under forty thousand square feet. Have an FAR ratio of point two two five.
Can you, um?
Let me, let me be.
Yeah.
I, I was incorrect, the allowable FAR on this property. Point two two five of its lot size. Is six thousand nine hundred and seventy-six square feet. We're about eight hundred and so square feet under the allowable FAR, so we are not maximizing that.
Okay, and, um, just, just regarding the presentation that I, I think the house is, you know, very well presented. Can you just talk about the character of the neighborhood and the other houses that are near it and how this is going to fit into the neighborhood?
Well, take the, the house immediately to the left of the drawing that you're looking at. Um, it is a very low one-story, fifties vintage or sixties vintage house. Um, and then the lot slope, it slopes from the left of this and continues slope all the way down Walnut. Um, the, the house.
I'm curious, you're talking, Ron, about the other houses, how does this, it feels very tall to me. How does it compare in height for the other houses on the street?
Uh, in fairness, it'll be taller than both of the houses to the left and to the right of it, um, but it is, it is within the allowable. Uh, max height of forty, forty feet.
Uh, Lyle, can you pull up, is there, um.
Street view?
Any, yeah, street view or any of the, the other houses on the street?
I know it's such a short little street and you kinda treat it all as one, that's why I'm curious, so what about, not just to the left and the right, what about other houses on the street? How does it compare in height to those?
Uh, well, there's examples of houses, uh, that are two stories and there's many houses that are one story or a story and a half. It's a, it's a, it's a combination of multiple houses, multiple styles.
I guess. I guess for me.
Some of these have not been renovated and they may in the future. I'm not pointing this out to hold anything back. I'm just trying to look at the big picture of how this, um. Picture of how this fits in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I did. It fits in the street. Tall, pointy house. I just, and I love the the materials you're using, but I'm a little concerned about the style.
I I kind of disagree with that, Bunny. You know, I'm looking at an English cottage. And inspirational sort of photos that you show Ron are more masonry product. And then when you look online, you know, just anything like the American Field Guide to Architecture and or. Pinterest under English Cottage, it leans more toward the. Stucco or brick or a little more durable material.
Well, if you look at the American Field Guide.
I guess I'm kind of concerned about clapper being tied into, you know, all these new white. Is it going to be a white house?
It's not going to be a stark white. It would be a softer white. Yes.
Yeah, I just I'm struggling with that a bit just because all the examples I've seen of English cottage for that style architecture. Is like what you showed in Inspiration with all the stucco and or.
Inspiration, go back to my inspiration in the in the first two is a clabbered siding house.
You want me to go back to the inspirations? Well, I'm just looking historically, English cottage, all of these are, you know, there's not a lot of timber in most of these that you. I'm just wondering if you've got some historic inspirations that you.
Well, if you if you take the the field guide to American houses and turn to the to the English style. In particular, you're going to see some inspiration of those. Most of those in that field guide are in fact a clabbered. Some of them are unpainted. But it's a clabbered. House and.
I guess that's what I was thinking. It's a more natural material, you know, more of like a cedar.
Yeah, I mean.
Can you pull up those inspiration photos? There there we go. I've got my field guide too, Ron. Where are you looking?
Hey, look at page one oh four, Bunny. I'm going to grab mine. It starts on one oh four and it the to be frank, the English style has many sort of. Subsectors to it. In the English, in this field guidebook, it's called post medieval English. The the house is certainly of of English composition and character that I'm presenting. The nuances to it, Gaven's correct, nuances to it can be many. In particular, my nuances are tied to and strongly tied to my top two inspiration photos. That is a. Clabbered. White clabbered house and it has, one of the primary reasons I'm showing it is is that it has. The eve and bracketing detailing that we're proposing. On this.
Yeah.
Jeanette, would you consider yours a English cottage?
I wouldn't call my house a cottage.
Well, but it's English.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
But it's but it's stone. I chose stone and clappard.
Right, this the proportions of the lower one feel more English to me. The upper one, I'm not really, it looked more Belgian or Dutch. Sort of Dutch in a way.
The the proportions of the lower one are are probably more similar to the proportions. That I'm proposing and that that's why it's on there. The detailing of the of the top one is is the bracketing detailing. And the simple, just. Simple way that we're treating the windows.
I think that, Ron, one of the issues that I have with with this, it's a bit boxy compared to these houses. And if we want to go back to your drawing and the windows too are very are different than the top. I like I like the bracketing. I think that's. And I appreciate that example. I think that looks really good, but. It feels a little more, and maybe I'm just missing the depth if we. But it feels a little more boxy than that one. I love these little side windows. I think by the front door, tho- those are very English to me. I don't. Think so much the front door, though. All that whole midsection there and then just the windows, you know, they're not like your examples.
I think I think in the back too, you could use a lot of shutters. I mean, if you're going to be facing Linwood on that. That's a lot of planking to be in for that rear elevation.
Go to the the more recent insert of the rear elevation.
Okay, maybe I'm thinking of the left side elevation because the left side is going to face.
Probably what you're thinking of.
Yeah, left side is going to face Linwood and it just seems like you want to complete the thought with dormer with shutters. Because you're going to see that going down Linwood as you turn on to walnut because it's very visible.
It's that bottom drawing right there.
Yeah, maybe that's the one I'm thinking of, but it just seems like if. The large windows, but the smaller windows. It's just a it's just a lot of vertical clapper there.
And it's a flat plane as compared to the other ones too. It's what I was talking about.
Well, shutters can certainly be added to that elevation. I'm not opposed to that at all. In fact, had a scheme with them on there.
And that elevation is a little different than the one I have that is online. Because the roof on mine goes up higher, so the windows are.
Yeah, Gaven. That was originally submitted had an air in that eve line right there that you're referencing.
Right.
Didn't pick up the overhang that's shown from the front. So I've cleaned that up.
Okay, yeah, because it shows the brackets, which is higher.
That's correct.
I I would like that if and will shutters work on those upper windows if.
Yes.
You know, like, are you?
Will they they were to open?
Does it overhang enough? Yeah.
They they will work.
I think that would help out for my opinion of this as far as the shutters and then. You know, the shutters on front. Can we go to the front elevation too? When I had, you may have corrected this as well, but. The front elevation I had, the window was not lining up with the vent above and the peak. I think that may have gotten correct.
Was adjusted.
Okay, and is there a reason we didn't do a vent on the right side one?
I felt like it was a bit crowded, though I could show it with. Let's. Gaven.
It's also it's it's not, it's it's recessed.
Okay.
Can we go back to the front elevation? Ron, can you talk me through the front door and that just center section there? And what precedent can you show me? Why why you want to do the front like that?
Well, one, it's the the effort is is to have more glass than not. Not sure maybe what you would be advocating in lieu of that.
I don't think it matches the side windows. I love the side windows. I think those look great there. But I feel like that there it's like two different styles to me. So that's why I'm asking just for some precedent or pictures or historical. Drawings, just something those those two do not feel right together to me.
When which side windows, Bunny, are you referencing?
I love the little side windows on either side of the front door. So is the front. Is the front door in the center or?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, so those little windows on either side of the front door that have a shutter on it. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay, those look, I think they look very nice. I I like those a lot and particularly with your English style. I love that they're smaller. But they don't, it doesn't appear to me that they go with the front door and just all of the glass around it. It feels like two different styles to me. Now tell me why that's. Tell me why I'm wrong. Or show me a picture or some.
Well, I've seen that many times. Those are usually closets in old English houses. They're usually bathrooms, closets.
Not the the little windows. I love the little windows, but it just feels like that's too that that's too much glass with those. It, I mean, it's.
Are you talking about the side lights around the front door and the transom?
Yes, it's just.
So you're talking about the side. There's a side light and transom to the front.
Yes, that I feel like are wrong with those windows. That whole composition in the middle feels wrong with this house. It doesn't feel English. That part does not feel English to me. So that's just asking, show me some pictures. Show me why I'm, show me.
Yeah, I I can bring you some inspiration to that, but the. The effort was to confuse it with a little bit of breath of fresh air with more daylight into the front of the house. You would get to see a light fixture that would hang inside the entry hall from that viewpoint versus a solid front door. Or shuttering around that front door. I can bring you some inspiration.
Like the one you had some columns in the the first picture, the inspiration pictures, the upper two. That had some columns out front. I don't know if we need columns or somebody. It feels just very flat. And it just doesn't feel like it matches the windows. So show, yeah, show the picture.
Do you know that 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 entry.
Comes proud.
Is coming proud.
Yeah, I can see it on the right side or is it on both sides? It's just on.
You you can see it on the right side elevation. I don't know if Lyle, you want to bring the right side elevation up. You can see it over there.
I'm going to disagree with you, Bunny. I think that there is room for a bit of a modern interpretation of a style. And the windows to me match in style. It it's a bit of a box front that is not readily apparent on the front. Elevation. You you have to look at the side to understand that that is.
Like you have a column on the side. It does look like there's some importance there.
The the bay of the.
That's the bay.
Will have pilaster columns that create. The the subtlety of the detail that maybe I I could give an enlargement of that.
I see it better now from the side view.
And and it's very pared down and simple.
I guess that's the word. I just needed more. It needed more. It it needed more importance.
I think you're reading it flat.
I'll I'll vote I'll vote with Jeanette. I think the thing hangs together very well.
Yeah.
But on the back, can we look at that one more time, Lyle? Just the rear elevation. There's only one.
Is what Jeanette was referencing is was to be more modern with the with the.
Yeah.
In style of the windows.
See, that's better because my my elevation, I was about to say this one shows and I I printed this out today. So you've made changes.
The the.
It helps a lot.
Back elevation of the of the original thing that was was missing was a bit austere and lacked.
Yeah.
Character.
No, I like this a lot better. I was going to mention, you know, the 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 vent helps and then those two little corner windows help out a bunch.
Yeah.
It was it was looking really flat and.
Yeah, I like that too. And I love all the little rafter tails and just I think that is looks really good. The bracketing is very nice.
How do you get out of that door, Ron? What happens? You just one large front first step?
No, if you go to Anne's, if you go to Anne's terracing, I didn't have Anne's terracing.
Okay.
Along with ours. So her terracing in the backyard answers that.
So that's a window instead of a door. It looks like.
You're going to walk out and you can zoom in on this. You're going to walk out those two doors right and left of that bay.
Okay, because it looked like you were showing them door in the middle, but that's a window.
That's correct. That's a a window in the middle.
And I can also see on this drawing to the overhead that I see how the front sticks out more now.
I guess I'm wondering in the plan, and it shows those the garage side windows that are above. Did those come proud as well? I guess they're not showing up in the floor plan, but.
Well, great catch in in the comment, Gaven, is that the two garage side elevations, the two upper floor dormers do come proud.
And they're like what's on your plan, not on Anne Day's.
Well, Anne Day was the first floor, the the second floor where the dormers come proud.
Gotcha. Okay. Which helps that elevation.
Yeah, we have a narrow lot. We are. Setback to setback and the effort is is to give some undulation to what could be long and sort of flat sides to. To this.
How many square feet do you have?
F A R of this house, and this is not basement.
Just the first and second floor, though.
Is six thousand, just over six thousand.
And and that other one that we looked at on. Is that west view or no?
But it wasn't really as big. That lot was a half acre. This is, what is this like point seven or?
Well, no, I'm just wondering how that one got that big. It's 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 big.
F A R, the basement numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then what is the height on this house? What's the height?
From the the measured from the front grade, I am right at forty to the highest point.
So you you are as high as it can go.
That's correct.
And and. I I think there might be some some people in the public who want to speak to that. So I'm not sure when we get to that portion.
But but just to run down materials.
You're breaking up, Gaven.
Oh, are we talking about? Are we talking about copper gutters, shake roof, and then the windows? Are they going to be dark or are they going to be light?
I think those will be of a light color. Not the current dark to light.
Well, I think the materials carry it a lot more than, you know, this house would read a lot differently if it was asphalt shingles.
I think that the shake roof makes this house. I would say the exact same thing. And I think it's going to stop in a lot. Height too, that the shake is going to help.
Well, and the and the landscaping is very elevated and really love to see that. This this design is really going to place this house in a in a beautiful setting. The reusing of the beautiful magnolia in the front. I I think this is very well done.
Jeanette, Jeanette misspoke. It is it is thirty eight feet, two inches.
Okay, so you're under.
I'm not at the maximum. And that's just at that center main body.
Okay, well, that's that's appreciably lower than it could be.
If the height is objectional, Ron, is there a way to lower the height of it? Just thinking about if Jeanette said there are people in the community concerned, she must have heard from somebody that there is concern about that.
Well, I just that someone had contacted me and I referred them to. I referred them to Lyle and encouraged them to participate in the meeting today. That's all I know.
Maybe we should see if there's anybody in the audience. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak for or against this proposal?
Yes.
You would need to unmute yourselves.
Mary, go on first.
Go on, Mary.
Okay, we live in the house. If you're looking at what you've got up there now, we're over to the to the right on the right elevation.
Name and address, please.
Okay, Mary Wade, three, two, three Walnut Drive.
Thank you.
Okay, our concern is this whole basement. Now, I understand you keep saying that doesn't apply, but they're getting storage, media, garage. They're getting accommodate the pool and they're also then has he pointed the height of the house is from the middle. Well, that but. Does the the drawing there does not seem to take into account the whole slope to because I would think that. Their first floor with a whole basement added in will now be looking at the top of our roof. And we'll be our, there's one driveway and then our house because this house is on a narrow lot. That concerns me because of the aesthetics, the way it fits in the neighborhood, what you see coming up and down walnut. It really just shoots the volume up. And I understand that Steve Kates builds these to get as much money as he can out of them at living in them a short period of time. And I don't begrudge him that, but I think he's just, it's going to change things a lot here. The overall design of the house I like. It's just. That whole basement piece just is like a rocket making the house take off. And particularly as it looks on that rear side from, we will now be looking at garage doors instead of a house. The other thing that I know comes down the pipe too, though, is. With all this going on, there is a huge amount of water running off that we've all seen since they built the house up on Linwood. And, you know, from from some other houses that have been redone. And most of these houses on the street now would say have been redone already. And, you know, there are few that haven't, but most of them have. So that's just my concern. And you know, there are few that haven't, but most of them have. Uh, so that's just my concern, is the huge volume that this basement adds. Because you look at those steps right there in front, well, it doesn't have to go up that high. You've got it, you're adding a whole car height to bring it up above the ground. And uh, that just seems unnecessary. Um, and, and, and problematic as far as once you get to the water mitigation side, because we've got, I know Paige Duke did the, all the uh, drains and water pipes that we've got in our yard. And then Delosia said they spent what, a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on water mitigation? If you put in fences, that's going to, you know, be a problem to work around with water. And some of the landscaping I had questions about as to what's on that property that needs to be maintained that was indicated being on our property.
Mary, I have something to, uh, this is Wade. Um, I'd like to invite Ron and Lyle to walk down our driveway and see the problems we dealt with just from the existing house with pipes put in stone walls, big drains in the driveway, just to get rid of the water that's already coming down. I don't have any problem with the house. I have problems with the water. And I think there are plenty of other houses that can be impacted by this.
Taken care of in stormwater though, isn't it, Lyle?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that, I was going to say, could Lyle, could you speak to where the house is measured from? You know, the height of the house and they allow the limits for the lot. And then whether, you know, the different the, the water is probably not part of our um, review today, but then Lyle can, I want you to be able to assure the other neighbors of how that will be dealt with.
Sure. I'll start with stormwater first. It will be a full stormwater plan by our engineer, Steve Casey of C E C for this lot to retain the first wanted rainfall, whether it be a, a rain garden, underground detention, level spreaders, whatever, pop-up valves, whatever's necessary. Um, the fact that you have stated your concern during this meeting, I will definitely point out and highlight the concern to the right of this home, your home, that will be taken into consideration for the uh, for the engineer when he, when he draws up the, the calculations for this lot. That is of the utmost concern is to protect the neighbors on each side, especially on the lower end where you are. As far as the height of the house, you're allowed forty feet. And I think Ron spoke to it as being a slightly over thirty-eight. And that is taken from an average natural grade. This lot falls heavily from the left to the right. Uh, you can't necessarily help the massing of a daylight basement on your side. But that uh, is addressed in the average natural grade. That's, I guess that's how Ron came up with that, that height. Is that correct, Ron?
Yeah, I, I'm not calculating my height from average finished grade. I'm calculating it from the center of the house. Right. Um, just to give you insight.
I also noticed a wall down there on the service court side. Did, did, did they calculate what that's going to be for the Kates as far as how tall that wall would be? And you know, I know you have to be five feet off the property. Is that with retaining walls too, Lyle, or?
No, uh, driveway.
You can have a driveway, okay.
Yeah.
I just would be curious to see how tall that wall is going to be for them.
Gaven, this is Anne Day. I'm on the call. Um, are you, which wall are you talking about? The one down by the, where the garage is?
Yeah, the service court wall. I just, you know, since.
Sorry, go ahead.
Well, just since we've got, you know, the, the garage walls over there and everything, I think that the Kates know how tall that wall is going to be also.
That wall is going to be between three and four feet tall. And it's going to be retaining from the uh, Kate's side.
I thought the lot fell from the left to the right.
It does, but we've got to go down. Um, so then it's going, we have to cut a little bit to where the garage is.
So you're grading down? You are grading down for the?
We have to cut, we have to cut just a little bit, yes.
How much is a little bit? Do you know how, how far?
I think we're cutting about a foot or two right here where it says service court in writing there. We're having to cut just a little bit. And you know what? I may actually.
Cause it looks like, looks like ten steps to get up to the backyard. I mean, you got.
That's a lot of steps.
Ten steps to get to the back.
Yeah. I think it actually becomes freestanding actually as it gets closer to the uh, street. I need to remind, uh, remind myself.
Um, if I can.
We can come back to that. Does she help me?
If I can cut in, um, hi, my name is Erin Weisman. I work at um, for Anne Day and um, this retaining wall by the service court on the um, plan north will be retaining um, approximately four to five feet at its tallest, which will be by um, those back steps. Um, which will be um, heavily screened on the lower side. So basically the service court is um, located at garage level. And so from um, entering at the gravel arrival court, you'll be going down. Um, it will be a pretty mild slope um, down to that service court, but you will be going down so that um, service court is the lowest point. That you are driving on or walking on hardscape wise. And then um, that retaining wall planned north um, will lower um, as the, and it's retaining the neighbor's side of the yard. So that we are able to get down um, to the basement level. But the um, lowest part of the site will remain at existing grade, which will be the um, northeastern side of the lot. And this lot is um, it is like north is up on this plan. So our top right.
Positive drainage toward the street then?
We do.
Is there positive drainage to the street? So
We do.
For, for the neighbors, that actually forms uh.
Not the way it runs.
Well, it's going to have to be.
It'll be northeast um, direction. So we're going um, up and to the right. Um, and so we will be, I mean, at the service court, that retaining wall will act as a buffer for our water. It will not be sheeting over to their um, property. Um, and so we will.
That's not what happens. That's not what happens. I'm going to look at it. That's not the way it works.
Well, they're going to grade, Mary. They're changing the grade is what they're saying.
I know. Well, the problem is, you know, and I, I'm, I'm no engineer with that. So, but they'll have to look at that. It doesn't go down toward the street. It comes toward our house. And that's why we have elaborate drainage there. And there's a stone wall that you have to watch the way the water pushes against the wall coming through. And it doesn't sheet over because of the work that was done when our house was redone. So we, it's, but more water coming off because there's a higher roof because of whatever else might happen. Just want to be real careful about that.
Yes, ma'am. Um, we will be at the service court going down lower than what is existing. So we'll be basically kind of containing ours. Um, so at the service court, we'll be cutting about two to three feet.
It comes out of the backyard because it comes down from Linwood between Mal's house and this house and on through. And then it goes diagonally on across uh, into the front of ours. For the most part, I feel like I can tell you more about that.
Absolutely. And, and we will make sure to be.
We're not just talking left to right. You, you've got a different dynamic going on. And this is probably something that should be taken up uh, with stormwater. This, our meeting is really to review.
Yeah, my, my, my question was just about the wall.
The basement part just adds to this, having this whole extra floor added on just seems to me that, and, and that it could be addressed in the design phase to make things simpler down the road. Because we've got a complicating issue anyway.
Well, it will be sunken, I guess is the point though. Like from your house, you, like four feet of it will be sunken from the wall. So like, you won't be seeing it from the base of the garage doors up. It will be sunken a little bit. So I think that will reduce um, you know, the height from your perspective.
You have, you, you have a higher floor going up though, because you have the, this, the height of the garage that's not there now. It doesn't exist now.
That's correct, but.
They're starting four feet below that where it is presently.
Correct. The, the, the new garage is going to be lower than where the garage is now.
Right, but you'll get half of it anyway. It's an addition of how much.
Mister Chairman, this is Steve Kates. May I speak?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. Uh, it's kind of interesting to be sitting here uh, having all this critiqued. It's uh, an interesting process. Uh, but I appreciate uh, the thoughts that have been shared. Uh, Ron and his work for us several times. Uh, we are residents of Bellmead. Uh, we love living in Bellmead. Uh, the, the type of homes we build, we try to build high quality uh, legacy homes that last. Um, and, and I can assure you uh, that uh, our partnership with Ron in the past, I think is allowed us to build homes that uh, are going to last and be what you want them to be. Uh, we've had experience with other great legacy architects. Uh, but it, it is about doing it right. It's, I think there was a comment earlier made about making a bunch of money. Uh, you make a bunch of money when you don't build them right, but when you build them right and hire great professionals like the ones on this uh, call, I think you get things that the, the city can be very proud of. Uh, certainly uh, the shutters on the left side elevation on the upper windows, if you feel appropriate, glad to take that as a contingency. Uh, there's an outstanding stormwater engineer working on the project. Uh, the Bellmead Stormwater Engineer is outstanding in his reviews as well. Uh, but I think stormwater is another conversation. I think the siding of the house is correct. Uh, so that its relationship to the street uh, is proportional versus what's there now. I, I think certainly this project here is a benefit to the city versus what's sitting there now. And uh, we uh, we like to go in and work uh, to make the city proud. And I think that's what we'll do here. And just thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your contribution.
Are there, are there any other members of the, of the neighborhood who'd like to speak?
Yes. Hello, thanks Jeanette. This is Marshall Sanders from three, ten Walnut Drive. And there's no question that this design is, of the house is going to be a beautiful house. I think the initial discussion that took place was, does this house fit on Walnut Drive? And the size, the height, and just the volume of the house is going to be different than any other house on Walnut Drive. And to add further insult to injury, we, if you're driving um, into Bellmead from Abbott Martin, there's the huge house that was just built on Linwood. And so then across the street from that house will be the house next door to this house. So we potentially have the gateway into Bellmead to have, I'll call it the monstrosity on the left. And then we'll have a, I don't want to call it a mansion because it's, the quality of the house is, is so high. But it's going to be another house that just doesn't fit in with the current fabric. And I think that's the point of this, of this um, meeting is to make sure that the houses that although it has the volume that's allowed, houses this size on Walnut Drive are on lots greater than an acre or many times two, two lots. So I feel like we're cramming in a beautiful, nice house into a, a small lot that is really high. So what are some of the things we can do to make this house not seem so giant? Maybe make the pitch of the roof lower. Um, we, we heard Bunny talk about the height of the roof on the other, on the house that we ta, talked about, I think it was also on Linwood. The roof of this house could be brought down. And then we hear Mary Wade's comments about the basement. Why is this house built with such a, such a foundation, a high pitch or high raise of the foundation? Is there a reason for that? Is there, there must be like ten or eleven foot ceilings in the basement. I don't know. So I'm just saying, I think the house is beautiful. I think that there can be some design elements that are changed to make this house fit more into Walnut. We're excited about a, about having a new house on Walnut. It's, it's great for the neighborhood. It's great for the street. We just want to make sure it fits in with the street. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have great comments. Um, can I? I, I think Ron, one of the things that I am concerned about is what he just of this house, the house that's on the street. Thing before everybody started commenting, I said, what could you do to lower this? Do you, how tall are the ceilings on each of the floors, including the basement?
The, well, they're on the, the drawing that Lyle just pulled up. Then, that's not clear ceiling height in the basement. That's you know, minus structure out of that. They'll net out about a nine foot ceiling in the basement.
Uh huh. What about the main floor?
Main floor is eleven feet and the second floor is nine feet.
Okay, I think that's really, eleven feet's very tall for this kind of English cottagey look. Could you lower that ceiling height? I mean, that's a tall, my house is a Georgian with ten foot ceilings and that's very ample. I mean, uh, that could take off some height right there and possibly the basement height not be so tall. I mean, I've, I've, these are legitimate. I think this is a legitimate concern that he, he's bringing up here with the height of this. So what can we do to lower it? It's a beautiful house, but on this street, on this lot, what can we do to not make this house so tall?
It, it would be taking height out of the, the ceilings, Bunny. Um, to answer your question specifically.
Ron, why wouldn't, if you drop the basement four feet, you get back almost to the finished grade that the house, the existing house has?
Well, and I'm just where I was headed next, and you're correct Mal, it would be lowering the whole presentation. And that would be a study that I'd need to uh, have Anne Day look into. It'd be trying to lower the whole presentation. One of the things that um, is interesting to me about the, the city's ordinances and um, where we came from to where we are today is, is that preceding their forty foot max height was a height of thirty-five feet. And what that presented uh, in, in my experience is it presented houses that suffered from ill proportions. Um, in other words, they got to looking a bit squatty. Uh, now appreciate Walnut's uh, character and sort of, it's, it's slowly being gentrified into some newer houses. Um, but the city chose to raise the max height up to forty feet to allow for better proportions and scale. And um, I guess it's all a perspective of how you start to look at things proportion and scale wise. This is a, definitely it's going to be, you know, it's a contemporary, modern house because it's being built today. There, there are ways that we could probably look at lowering this house um, a bit. Uh, I know, know that what that's going to do to the grading and drainage component of it.
Because it's already five, it's already five feet down to get into the garage, correct? So if you're lowering that three more feet, that, that's a significant drop going into the garage that's on, that's underneath.
Maybe you don't do that then.
I think one thing that's an advantage is having that big magnolia in front. I mean,
Yeah.
Yes, you know, that's going to help block that corner for one. And if it's, I don't, I don't think we can tie.
Gaven.
You cut off that.
Broke a lot of that.
Um, can I add something?
Okay.
The, I'm sorry, Gaven. We I, I agree with you. I think that magnolia is going to add a ton of context to this house because it's about, it's, it's probably fifty to sixty feet tall. So it's going to make the house, you know, it's going to give it a ton of context, number one. And number two, the elevation of that basement was determined uh, based on having positive flow out of there to the lowest point of the site. Um, so if we lower it anymore, then we would have to rely on a sump pump to get any water out of that, you know, basement. So that's kind of where we, you know, came up with that elevation as to what the basement is.
Everybody bump up on the street.
Everybody has one. Well, and another thing we did, we
You have a basement, you have to have a sump pump.
We've added a series of walls um, in the front of the house to kind of um, also kind of make it a little bit more graceful approach. So that the house doesn't, you know, it kind of gives it a, an additional platform. Um, so that it's, um, it just makes it, gives it a little bit more context and integrated with the lay of the land. So that um, was another reason why we added the series of walls, just to kind of, you know.
Would that require variance for the B Z A?
I don't think so. None of them are over three feet tall. They are um, I think.
It looked like the one was pretty much like, it looked like six or seven on the front elevation, but I may be mistaken.
Uh, well, we're going to be raising that elevation. Um, we've got.
Oh, it's not going to be wall. You're going to have, you're going to have the elevation dirt raised up so that the wall reveal is only going to be a few feet.
Correct.
Yeah.
Now, the wall going around. Now, the wall going around to the, there is, you know, I, there's controversy as to where that wall starts and stops and what's considered part of the house. Because when you go around to the side where the garage is, that wall holding up, you know, that wall down there, right there where the, you drive in, into the garage is gonna be pretty tall. But there, Lyle has kind of given us a little bit of leeway there because it's part, somewhat part of the house to help you get down to the basement.
But the bottom line is, the bottom line is, and I'm looking at the existing garage, uh, out my side window, you're gonna cut basically five or six feet along that driveway in order to get to the finished floor elevation of the basement.
It'll actually be, um, just, uh, three, three to four feet.
I don't know how the math works. You got eight feet, nine feet in the basement from ceiling to structure, underside of structure. Um, and there's the garage at grade now.
Well, you can see, um, so if you see where the, the, the grades, the contours, um, right at that, um, they kind of drop off pretty significantly right there. So like, if you're counting from like right where that wall starts as you enter, you know, where that pier is, right there, we are cutting about five feet. If you start cutting from that point up, you know, from there, we're cutting. But like if you base it on, does that make sense? Like we're basically, that's the grade in which we're gonna start to cut from where that column is at that retaining wall. Into the slope.
Actually maximum cutting four feet at, um, the rear, um, right corner of the house at the, uh, fireplace is currently at 549 elevation. And the service court, um, will be at 545. So we will cut four feet there, and then the, the grade is falling. So, um, that by the time you're at that retaining wall, the end of it, um, the grade is at 546 existing, and we are going down. We're about at existing grade there. So our max cut will be at four feet. Um, and then over the average of it will be about three feet in the service court.
So that, that being said, um, you're basically raising your finished floor elevation above, uh, five feet above, um, the existing grade.
Where the current finished floor elevation is now?
Of the first floor.
We have raised the finished floor, uh, 30 inches from where it currently is.
So 30 inches and four feet doesn't make nine. But how do you get nine feet to the basement?
She's saying from where it is now, but the house now is raised up out of the ground. I mean.
Correct.
Yeah.
The lot, um, falls from left to right, and so, um, where the service board is, it's only cutting so much because the lot has fallen so much over that course. So at the, our southernmost edge of the house, it's at 5, um, 52 existing grade, and then it gets to 549 by the other side. So it's, it's falling three feet alongside of it existing grade.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering, you know, Ron, could you speak to, sometimes it's a game of inches in different areas. So, you know, would your client and you consider raising, you know, lowering the finished ceiling on the first floor some? Putting the house a foot further into the ground, just, just small measures will add up in different areas.
I mean, if you, yeah, if you could take a foot off that first floor, that would help a lot. And then, as she said, and make it a little deeper into the ground so there aren't so many steps up to the front door. How would?
We, we gotta make sure we got positive drainage out of there for that garage.
So, so it may be inches, not, not a foot. I'm not asking for a foot, but you know, it may be inches. It may be eight inches out of the first floor elevation. Something to lower it a little bit further down. Can I, can you answer one thing? How high is the house now? Like, we're looking at that right now. How high is the existing house?
I haven't measured to the ridge, uh, Jeanette. I can do some quick math for, give me just a second.
Yeah. I'm just trying to, you know, if we're changing the landscape here, let's understand how much is being changed.
Yeah, I, I would say that it's probably, to the very top of that, I'm guessing it's probably 26 to 27 feet.
Okay, and so it's probably going 10, 10 feet more up.
10 feet more.
Keep in mind that, you know, some of the things I think this house suffers from is that it suffers from setting at grade.
And a shallow roof pitch, that's, yeah. There's a lot of things it suffers from.
Yeah.
How many steps up to the front, to the first living, the space on the front, first floor?
Well, it's in segments.
Yeah, we've got.
It's on the sloping part too. I understand of the lot, but could you?
It's a total of 10. It's separated into six and four. And there are six inch risers, so it's a, it's a graceful, um.
And right now, it's at grade. Well, but, but this entry is offset and beautifully so. So she, you know, don't penalize them for how many steps go up because they're starting it at the lower edge of the, of the lawn.
Mr. Chair. If, if I could speak to that, um, if you, if you go to Jackson Boulevard, 200 Jackson Boulevard, and see the way that, uh, Ann and Ron separated the steps to gracefully take it to the front door, it's very similar. And then if you go to Shepherd Place, the house we did there last year, uh, it's very similar with that number of steps. It works very, very well.
Just the height, the complaint of the neighbors though, and the concern of it fitting in on the street is the height. And I'm just trying to figure out how you can lower the height.
Fortunately, Ann and, and the engineer have lowered the grade as low as they can and still make the drainage work. And I.
Ceiling heights lower in the house.
Uh, not to make the windows work correctly, uh, with the interior spacings and the.
To have 11 foot.
Proportions. Um, well, what we find is that. I'm sorry.
Bunny, I'm losing you.
You're breaking.
I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
I'm so sorry. Uh, what we find is that we need 11 feet to do the things we do with the window treatments and windows in appropriate.
Don't have to have 11 feet. You just don't. And I'm, I'm, I'm gonna listen to the neighbors on this. And for you, because you want 11 foot ceilings and it's towering over the houses, we're gonna have to have some give here on this.
Well, we've, we've provided some give already with what we submitted. Um, my question is, are the town, is the city rules, in the city heights, in the city FARs, are they what we're supposed to go to, or is this subjective?
Well, it, we look at on the architect, and doing architecture review, the houses around it. And it, and that's just something we look at, and we care what the neighbors think about what they're living beside and what they look at. The whole thing with the Historical Zoning Commission, a lot of this is very subjective with us. And it's how the house has been on the lot.
Lyle needs to speak to that maybe.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I may not agree with you, Bunny.
The house to the left is maybe 16 feet tall. I mean, I, I don't know how we can say that.
This house is already 10 feet taller than that. I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying.
All we're trying to do is follow the rules of Bellmead.
I got it. Then we wouldn't need to have a committee if that's all we looked at. But what I'm telling you is, this house is very tall, and we're trying to work with you to, the design is lovely on this house. We're trying to work with you on this.
We have made many, we have made many changes to fill the rules of the City of Bellmead.
I, I, you, I'm not arguing with that. I'm not arguing with it. We, you, he's established it's below 40 feet. Um, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is this is a very tall house. And 11 feet, I understand that may, you've, you may need to be flexible to get this approved.
Well, Bunny, you're, you're, let, let me make this clear that Bunny is one member of this committee and does not speak for all of us. And so let's move to something where I'd like to know what are.
But I do have a vote, and I do care what the neighbors think, and they're the neighbors concerned about it.
You've made that clear. May I ask, what are the heights of the houses, the other houses along the street so we can understand the landscape of, of this neighborhood? I, I can, I, you can zoom through it. I can see that. Is there any information on the heights of the other houses? And I do understand that when you talk about a, a mid-century ranch to the left, that's gonna have a 16 foot height. But if, if there's an issue about the height of this house, I'd like to know what are the heights of the other houses renovated, new or unrenovated on the street for me to be able to evaluate. I think that's great. That's great, Jeanette.
Jeanette, I don't have that, uh, specific data at my fingertips to answer your.
Well, just, well, but does anybody who's objecting to the height have it? If the objection is this is too high, I'd like to know what are the heights of the other houses? Because what the applicant has given us is the height of a house that is within the limits of what Bellmead is allowing.
Can I say something?
It's within the zoning ordinances.
But, right.
Who is this?
Mary Wade, may I speak?
Yes.
Again, I, I, you know, the design of the house is fine, but sometimes ordinances don't nail things down 110%. We've seen that. And so if you're looking at the height, again, it's the slope of the lot, given the height requirement in the averages. So, you know, uh, you can fit it in anywhere you want to, uh, in terms of, of, of trying to make things work. But it's the slope here with that and, uh, and the buildup, if it's absolutely not necessary. Thank you.
Is there any more? I feel like we might need a little more information.
Mr. Chairman, I think Doug wanted to weigh in. I don't know if he's frozen.
Chairman, I, I, I wanted to say, just given this dialogue right now, the, the city's maximum height is not the sole consideration. The whole purpose of the Stormzoning Commission is to consider compatibility. That's, that's the one of the basic fundamental policies and standards they are to consider, but it is not subjective. Decision-making is not, but it shall not, should not be subjective. It should be, but, so that's why I think where Ms. Switson is looking for data about the height of, uh, Jason houses, it's highly irrelevant to determine compatibility. But it's not subjective. We don't make subjective decisions.
No, and, and, and the one that's pulled up on the screen now, we should be able to just pull up that these are things that have been built in the past five years. Those records should be there. So maybe if we take a minute break.
I'm sorry. This, this is Marshall from Walnut. This house sticks out. This house is built before we had this review. And I think if we had this review, this house may not have been built. This is the, this house sticks out on Walnut.
It'd be nice to have a comparison with this house and the one that's proposed.
Can you look at, uh, would that be possible for you to tell us the height of this house?
I can, but it'll take me till tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
This is, wait again. Look at the slope of that lot as opposed to the slope of the proposed lot that's gonna be built on. This is relatively flat.
Well, I think what you're saying is you, this is not comparable because you are considering the soap, the, the height of this house from the side that is exposed. And I'm just not sure that that is something we're gonna have to be able to consider it for the height that is allowed by Bellmead, how that is determined, not from the most exposed side of the house. I understand what you're saying, that they're different lot, that they're different sites.
Is there any objection, uh, to closing the public portion of the, uh, meeting?
Well, as long as everybody's had a chance to speak that's on, that would like to. Want, once, I mean, has been able to say, we, we don't need to reiterate, but I just wanna make sure we got to everyone. Okay, I think there are no other. I don't object to that. There's no other.
May I say one new thing?
Sure.
Uh, oftentimes my experience with this is we don't hear from the positives because everybody's busy. And, and I have received positive affirmation about what a beautiful plan that Ron has drawn here and what a beautiful landscape plan by other neighbors on the street. So, you know, I know everybody's busy, but my, this is the first time I've heard of any unfavorable comment. It's been, thank goodness, this is wonderful. This house that's sitting here is not good. We love what you've drawn. We can't wait for you to be a neighbor. So, and, and I, you know, I've experienced this for years. I didn't think about getting other people to call in and saying how great this is. But this is not the, the typical feedback, um, that I have received over the last two weeks and the typical feedback, um, of the other homes that we've done in Bellmead. But again, we, we will do everything we can, uh, to, to meet what you need us to do. Uh, it's just the height is one that we've worked as hard as we can, um, to, to fit within what I thought the rules were, um, and the guidelines were. Uh, but I don't really have any flexibility to do much more is, is the issue, or I certainly would. And thank you for your consideration.
Let me, can I, can I ask one more question, Mal?
Sure.
Is there a reason you cannot make the, Ron, the, the house work with 10 foot ceilings on the first floor?
Well, first and foremost, you have, uh, an applicant, an owner that has purchased this and wants 11 foot ceilings. I mean, uh, you could make the ceilings eight feet. To answer your question, not trying to push back hard, but there's no, there's, there's no, you know, hardship to the property that says they can't be lowered, uh, to differ from that. But you have an applicant, and I think this is conversations we've all had as a board, but the, the guidelines of the city and ordinances of the city allow for a maximum building height of 40 feet. And, um, what I've tried to do within the program requirements received from my client is to give a house that's proportioned and well-compositioned with the stipulations of the ceiling heights they're desiring. There's some subtleties to, um, some things I could do to get a little bit of max height out of it. I'm not sure that's the right proportion game, um, for it. And, um, so I think that, uh, lower the.
I guess, it seems like we'd wanna do some kind of survey of the street to see, is this actually gonna be the tallest house on the street when it's built?
I feel pretty sure it is. I, I don't, I don't think a survey's needed. I feel like it is, absolutely. Um, but we were try, trying to create the right proportion, uh, to fit with the slope of the lot. And, and stay within the Bellmead guidelines and rules, which is what I thought the, the city ordinances did. I thought we were talking about, you know, give and take on shutters and building materials and, you know, window styles and, and all that sort of thing. I thought if we fed, met the guidelines and the rules, I certainly knew this house was taller than the other houses on the street, or most of them, not all of them. I, I don't, I'm not, I don't read in the ordinance where it says to do that. But, you know, if Ron tells me that he can get the first floor ceilings, uh, down to 10 feet and it makes everybody happy, I don't think it's the right thing to do from the type of houses we build because of the, the window treatments and the plank ceilings we do. But, I mean, Ron, can you say right now that you can make it work? I mean, I, we've never done a 10 foot ceiling. I mean, most of our ceilings are even taller than that. I mean, we're building really legacy homes here. And we're building really legacy homes here that stand up and are beautiful. And part of that is what it takes on the inside to get the ceilings, but I, I just, I'm not an architect. I'm a civil engineer. And this is a very unusual conversation to me. I, I don't understand if we're meeting the city rules and guidelines, how we're getting into interior design conversations, which is basically the ceiling height, and everybody is entitled to their, their opinion, but that's why I hired Ron and Anne and all those folks. But again, I, I want to work with you however I can. Ron, can you change the slope slightly on the roof to get a foot out of the roof?
Well, let, 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 let me also interject that, um, really the core of this conversation is compatibility with the neighborhood. And that's, it's not interior design discussion. It is compatibility with the neighborhood. Um, I do see where you already have a roof pitch that i- is not too steep. So I, the, changing the roof pitch to me is going to ch- change the look of this house. And Ron, you can speak to this, but bringing the ceiling height down is definitely going to change the window package that, that is in this house. There's not a lot of room. Um, I would just like to hear from Anne again, it, whether this could, the house could be lowered somewhat. That to me is the key to it.
Well, I guess first of all- If we could get Lyle to maybe talk about, um, historic versus, um, you know, just BZA.
And I think, didn't, uh, maybe we can also get Doug to repeat what he said earlier about that?
Go ahead, Doug.
Thanks a lot. Um, no, all I was saying is the city's bulk standards, which existed before we adopted the Starz zoning regulations, uh, would, and would then and now allow forty feet in height, but we've got an overall responsibility in this commission to consider compatibility with the adjacent properties. And I would say, and that's my opinion, that, um, if, if, if there was a finding that the, uh, proposed construction was not compatible, then it, it, it's not necessarily entitled to have the floor forty feet of height that the city ordinance allows. Now, I'm not on one side or another here, but that's, that, that's the way I read the ordinance and prepare to defend it. So that's my take on it.
Mr. Chairman, may, may I make a comment?
Certainly, certainly.
I think if there was a home built on this lot that was thirty-five feet tall, it would still be somewhat imposing due to the topography of the lot and it being on the high end of Walnut. Um, in our ordinance, a- as Doug has stated and Ron has stated, we've got a maximum of forty feet. And until, uh, that language is changed to address lots that slope from the right or right to left and on the high end of the street, I, I don't see how you could rule against this, in my opinion.
I'd like to say that I think the house is beautifully designed. Uh, uh, our first level is, is this an identifiable style? Is it done with integrity? The materials, all of this is above and beyond many things that are submitted to us. And so, the house itself is a beautiful example of what we would like to see built in Bellmead. There's no mistake about that. I struggle with the neighbors being unhappy, but in the end, this is a homeowner who has added a lot to Bellmead, who is committed to building something that is of the integrity that we want built in this, in this town. Um, and so again, can I ask i- i- if Anne sees, is there any wiggle room with, with pushing the house any further down to, to have some mediation for, um, the massing of the house as it sits a bit lower, you know, two steps out of this front, uh, elevation. Anne, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I'm looking. I'm looking at the, um, topography. And if you notice, we've got, honestly, I just don't think so because the, the, um, the, we've got the garage elevation at, I've got it, hang on a second, at five forty-five point two-two.
Yeah.
You'll see that contour, um, where that suburban is coming in. See where it says five forty-five right there?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so essentially, we've also still have to have positive flow from a pipe to get to that elevation. So like, the length of that is basically right. I mean, I just don't see us being able to lower it anymore.
My, my concern is if you did that, you're adding more water to a stormwater situation that you got.
If, if that truck coming in is at five forty-five and this car parked in the back corner is four feet down, how are you getting the water from under this car to under that car?
We're going to have to use a pipe.
We are, um, planning on using, um, it'll be diverted, um, to where those two trees are shown, um, by that retaining wall, which will be our lowest point. And so it'll be about, um, five forty-four, um, elevation. It'll be the lowest point in the site, um, instead of, and, and the gravel could be used as a permeable solution, but we weren't talking about that, um, being a permeable application at this time.
And, and let me say this, as a civil engineer, I'm not going to live in a house if I can't get the drainage to work and grade it right. I mean, it will, it will not go any further. And I, I actually looked pretty hard at this. In what they did, I felt like I would be worried to go any further with it. Uh, because I certainly would if I could, uh, but I, I just feel like as much time as we've spent on this, we've got the proportions correct. We've got the drainage right. Um, we're going to solve a lot of the drainage issues that are from upstream of here. And, and quite frankly, most of the projects I've done in Bellmead are not, the drainage issues are not related to what I'm doing. They're related to what's happened in the past, and I have to go in and divert the water and fix the water. And it was, so we're actually improving the engineering of the city as we go through just because it's never been handled in the past. Um, and, and this house is a much improvement over what's there right now. I mean, there's no telling what it would cost me to fix this up on this house. And I just don't want to live in it. I-
Well, we've approved the demolition, so.
I, I understand, but I'm just saying that the alternative to go back now and try to fix it and make it work, I just don't think it looks good for the neighborhood. It doesn't look good for Bellmead, in my opinion. In fact, many of the houses I see in Bellmead, they're not legacy homes.
So, is it appropriate to c- close the public portion of this hearing at this point?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, the chair will entertain a motion to, uh, defer consideration on this project?
Why are we deferring it?
Well, shall say it another way. The chair will entertain a motion to defer, deny, or approve this project as submitted.
I am going to make a motion to approve the project. Personally, I feel that this site is sitting at the top of Walnut Drive and, which is why it is receiving this, this type of scrutiny, and I'm, I'm just not prepared to, um, penalize the homeowner who has presented a very beautiful home to construct here.
Can, can we add the, uh, conditions to that? I know there were a few that we had mentioned.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to add some conditions.
I know that we've talked about shuttering the Lynnwood side when you, the left side.
Yeah.
It's on the back of the home, correct, Gaven?
Uh, it would-
The Lynnwood, the left side.
Okay. Yeah, and that we would, uh, take as submitted the elevation and the most recent elevation of the back, because I think the one that was submitted, that I printed out, was not the one that, uh, Ron had shown in that presentation.
So a condition that the wa, the elevations and plans-
Rear elevation.
That we saw today are being approved and not the ones that are on the website as submitted.
Correct. And, uh, we just got to make sure that Magnolia lives.
That's, that's Anne's.
Anne, can you assure saying they that that's going to live?
We are like on that one for sure.
Um, can I say something?
I think we've closed the public portion, right?
Okay.
With the public portion, but not the-
Okay, there's you, Bunny. Sorry.
So I, that, so if you want to add, I have a motion on the-
I, I need to, I'm going to second that motion with the conditional stipulations.
Okay, now we can have discussion, I think.
Yes.
Okay, I think that the house is absolutely beautiful. I think it, that Ron's done, I mean, particularly as we talked through it and I, I got a better understanding of it, I think it's very pretty. Um, I am concerned about it fitting in on the street and the neighbors' concerns and the height. And I do think that you have to look at a house in relation to the lot and the other houses around it. I feel that sense of responsibility personally being on this committee. And I think when we ask neighbors to, um, enter in and to voice their concerns, I feel an obligation to listen to them. And based on that, um, I'm not seeing a willingness to change the height of this house. Uh, we, we've asked it in many different ways, and I don't see anybody willing to do that. And I don't know that that's, that is concerning to me when you have neighbors who are saying they feel like the house is too tall and, and the owner is saying it's taller than anything else on the street. If the forty-foot requirement is what we're always going to go by, then we can just stop talking about h- house heights for anybody. Then that means any house in Bellmead can be forty feet tall. It doesn't really matter what the other homes around it look like or what they are, and I don't know that that's being respectful to the other people living on the street.
Well, this house is at thirty-eight feet, Bunny, so it could actually be two more.
Yeah, even at thirty-eight.
So it's two feet below the, the limit.
Let me say this, out of respect to the committee-
Hold on, we've, we've closed the, the-
Public portion.
So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm going to agree to make this.
Sorry, sorry, we've closed that portion.
Um, and I also think that's in the center, I believe, that Ron said, not on the side, and with a sloping knot, that, you know, that the, it's going to change how it feels. And I understand that the calculations may be done at the center of the property, but, um, it's a lot taller than forty on the side. But, um, I just-
How do you measure it? Isn't it average grade all the way around?
Average natural grade.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought Ron said it was from the center.
That's pretty much this average.
I have texts from the applicant that would be, say the ceiling would be ten feet on the first floor.
What? I, I'm-
What, say again, Ron, we, you cut out.
I have a text from the applicant saying he will revise the ceiling heights to ten feet on the first floor.
But Ron, does that change, um, does this significantly change what the house looks like on the outside? I mean, are your windows going to change? I mean-
Proportionally, I can assure you that I'll adjust that in a correct manner. And there's a couple other thing. I never had the opportunity to answer the question on the table about, can I, and how can I address some of the height issues? There's ways to proportionally bring a foot out of this house. Maybe more, but I'm just saying that's on the table and the, the committee, the board should consider.
Ron, we've got the public portion closed.
I'm going to mute myself.
Hey, I, I misunderstood then. So the height, the thirty-eight and a half is the average over the whole lot, the thirty-eight feet? It's not, this is the center?
Mr. Chairman, my ans, may I answer the question?
Uh, consent board, board, um, I think, to listen to Ron.
I, I think, I think as long as he's providing additional information and his client is willing to offer some things that might help the board make its decision, that'd be appropriate.
Okay.
The, the city ordinances measure building height from finish, from finished grade. I'll jump in if I'm wrong. But, um, and it's at the front, and that's where I'm measuring it from. Uh, it's from the center of the front. On the left side, it's a little shorter. On the right side, it's a little taller. But the, the applicant, um, and I've looked at this while we're talking, uh, because I've got it up on my computer. Um, I, I, there, there's a willingness and there's a way to, to remove some height of this, be it subtle. But I think, um, one, I think it's important to know that we're not at max height intentionally.
Right.
I felt, I felt that it would, would have been too tall. There's a scheme in here that had it at forty feet. Two, um, we're two feet below it, and I think we're willing to make concessions.
Well, that is very appealing to me, just.
Can we make that a condition? Or we, we've already tied in the, the motion. Can we tie that in the motion to see if the applicant can lower the height?
If, Mr. Chairman, if you mind, don't mind my saying so. I think so.
So it's amendment, amendment to the motion?
You don't have to make a formal amendment. It sounds like to me between you, you're adding some conditions to your motion. Uh, was it Jeanette's motion or yours, Gaven?
It's my motion.
If you have no objection, Jeanette, to adding that condition, motion.
I like to add that. Yeah, I, I made the motion, Gaven seconded it, and we put some conditions on there with shutters. Now we're going to say they will look to trying to lower the height up to one foot.
And elevation, elevation on the back.
Without objection, that's your motion, man. Excuse me, Mal, I'm not trying to run it.
Yeah.
Jeanette, could we, instead of up to one foot, at least one foot? Because I think that's what he said. Ron said he could get at least-
Ron, is that what you said?
Yes, at least one foot.
Okay, at least one foot.
And what I appreciate about all that, y'all two, is I think that that is, this is how our committee functions. We listen to people. We're trying to be, we're grateful for beautiful design. We're grateful for high quality. We're trying to be respectful of the houses around it, and this is how I think that this, this is why we discuss this.
I agree.
So, the motion is, um, to approve, with these changes, don't we want to see this house again after it's redesigned?
Well, that's what I asked Ron, whether, whether it was going to substantially change the windows and change the, the look.
Is that something that Lyle does? Is Lyle?
I think it would proportionately change it, but like it takes one row out of the window at the top.
I'm comfortable with, if he's, as the architect, if he can do this.
I think I can, and the portions be correct.
Right.
I'm comfortable with it too, that the, that if it does not significant, if it's not significantly altered on the outside, coming down at least a foot, then it does not need to come back to us.
Okay. So, um, are we ready to take a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Gaven?
Aye.
Bunny?
Aye.
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
And Mal votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope you'll be happy with the house.
It's beautiful. It's pretty house.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Are we finished, board?
Uh, yes, we have a motion. Uh, the, the chair will entertain a motion for, uh, adjournment.
Sorry about the barking dogs.
I think we have some good material for next year's, uh- Here's a review.
Second.
Second. What was I saying?
I think we have some good material tonight for next year's.
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Popo challenged lot. Should there be a height restriction?
Well, I think it's, I think it's just that it should be measured by the average grade all the way around the house.
That's the MPC.
Yeah. And this, no, I won't say that. So, motion to adjourn, Gaven?
Aye. Bonnie? I made the motion.
Bonnie seconds it. Aye.
Aye.
And Mal votes aye. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.